Everybody, welcome to the June 7th, 2021 Citrus School Committee meeting. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, the town of Citrus Public Meeting shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comments will be available by Zoom. Community members can also email me at mlong@cit.org with any questions they have after the meeting. So at this time, I'm going to call the school committee meeting to order via roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Alimblom?
Yes.
And Long, yes. So before we get to the celebrate student learning, I just want to take a quick minute and congratulate all of the seniors for graduating on Friday. It was a great celebration of all. All the students, I thought the speakers did all did a great job. So congratulations to all the seniors as well as Dr. McGuire and her staff for putting on a great ceremony despite the weather that we had in the afternoon. Everyone I talked to has said it turned out really well, so congratulations all. So first on the agenda is celebrating student learning with the math and science departments. And first, we're going to start with Ms. Grindel with the math as the math department chair.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay, everybody? I'm not sure. I changed venues.
Yep.
It might be echoey. Okay, great. So thank you, first of all, for having us and inviting us to share on behalf of the math department. I think we all know the faculty and staff of all the Citrus Public Schools has been growing from all the challenges this year. So we wanted to share just a short video that we put together with the help of most of the teachers with their ideas and brainstorming, and you'll get a glimpse to see some of our students, grades six through 12, in the video. So I'll share my screen and the sound should be working. So if somebody will just give me a thumbs up once it starts, just so I know that you have the sound, that would be awesome.
Liz, I don't believe we're here. Should we hear it yet?
You should be able to hear it. No, you couldn't hear it.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, stop sharing, stop sharing.
Okay.
Real quick, I'm before, and I want you to share again. And before you click that share button, I want you to look in the bottom left hand corner that says share audio too. It'll be down in that bottom left hand corner. Try it again.
Thank you. I'm a Google meter, not a zoomer. Oh, I see it. Perfect.
You got it, you got it.
Appreciate it, Seth.
Um, it's definitely been inspiring to learn math this year because everything's just so incredibly crazy. That it's kind of nice to just to be able to do something that I'm used to and I'm good at. And it's just nice to have something that's normal and still just the same. I answered, I mean, like even history with data, you need to know math. She just helps everyone understand it. She'll go around and help us with all of us.
Definitely think like even with hybrid learning and remote learning, we got to collaborate a lot more than I thought we would. Because I thought it would just be like completely isolated, get a worksheet, do your own thing. But we did get to work together a good amount, and I think that definitely helped me.
At home, it taught me to not always, you don't always need help from others. You can work through problems yourselves.
Students in seventh and eighth grade were asked to share the best part of math at Gates this year. Two hundred and forty-six students gave their feedback. They were impressed with the learning, the balance between in-class and hybrid learning. They enjoyed quizzes, cahoots, like the new way of getting help from their teachers. Eighth grade students at Gates were recently given the opportunity to do a scavenger hunt using the information, content, and skills they had learned throughout the school year. They were eager to be outside with their peers. Next, we'll hear the story of some of our ninth grade students and their experience at Citrus High School.
Hi, my name is Louisa Kinsley. Four of my classmates and I have been asked to put together a video about some skills we learned this year in ninth grade geometry class. This probably looks familiar to you. We've learned most well-known theorems in math. We further extended these skills this year in ninth grade, starting with when we looked at two magical figures like Travis.
Hi, I'm Meg Smith, and today we'll be talking about right triangles, which we've learned in our ninth grade class. The middle angle is forty-five, forty-five, ninety. They've given us the number five. That way, we know that the other leg would also be fat, since they are equal to each other.
Hi, my name is Sydney Lightning, and what we're trying to find is the opposite. Knowing this, we know that we're going to have to do the sine, which is opposite, over hypotenuse. So we push in sine in our calculator, twenty-eight equals x over nineteen.
Claire Murray, and I'm going to be talking about how I used the knowledge that we learned in our math class about forty-five, forty-five, ninety right triangles. In my robotics class, when we were building our claw bot, which we designed to help lift objects and to drive to other locations and drop them off.
In robotics class, we were tasked to find the distance from the structure to the robotic arm if it was being held at a ninety-degree angle. Since I knew these were both point five, I knew I could go to my calculator and multiply point five by radical two. And that gave me point seven. I know how to find this distance, and that's something I didn't know how to do before we learned it this year in math class.
Hello, my name is Chloe, and today I'll be showing you how we learn in class connects to MCAS. So right here, I've answered to a grade ten MCAS problem from a few years ago. Now that this, so it's another thirty-sixty triangle, and we know this is twelve feet. And we need to get to here the hypotenuse q and r. So we will be doing twelve divided by radical three, which equals four radical three. And because the hypotenuse, we multiply that by two to equal eight radical three.
As students transition to Citrus High School, they have the opportunity to take both required courses and elective. Here we have a picture of some of our students as they work on their AP Statistics final project. They have the opportunity to collect real data from their peers, and all of the curriculum connects to real-life experiences. This project consists of students working through the notes on content that they have already learned. This opportunity to create both videos and notes for peers who are incoming to the class is something that students appreciate. As you can see, there are lots of different opportunities that exist at Citrus High School and Gates for students in math. We're looking forward to implementing some of the new things we've learned through hybrid, but also sticking with some of the basics.
So I just wanted to share with you, when we asked some of the teachers about how we could tell the story of the department, we talked about obviously involving students. And I did like the interviewing of our middle school kids. Those are some of our members, our math team members. But the ninth grade girls took it upon themselves, they chose their own topics. They felt like it was really important to include their journey from the gates all the way through the high school and what they learned. And they were really, they thought it was important also, which I really appreciated, about sharing what their experience is like using knowledge they learned for MCAS. And again, I don't think it's the end-all, be-all, but it was, it was interesting to me that the, that the students felt like that was important. So the final piece of this that I wanted to share, the school counseling department at the high school does a senior exit survey, and they had just shared the data as I was wrapping up creating this last week. And they found it really interesting, the seniors shared, there was a ninety-seven percent response rate, which is great. So I'm not really sure how they got that response rate, which is awesome. I don't know what they did in exchange, but fabulous, we need to do more of that. Our students were able to share with us that they really appreciated their math courses. And I know, and maybe some of us have this like, you know, it's, it's easy for people to say like, I don't like math, I can't do math. Most people don't say like, I don't do reading, I can't do reading. But I think it's super important for us to really celebrate that the work that all of our educators do from pre-K through 12 and helping support kids. They said things like they appreciated that they were preparing their math skills for college. They talked about that their introduction to computer programming class, because it opened their eyes really for what they actually wanted to learn in college. So it's just a reminder for us, when we as a collective group, whether we're math educators or any type of adult to work with kids, if we teach our students to see what they can do outside of the school, and we connect with them with the relationships, we're giving them an even bigger gift. So thank you so much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Like I said, I'm not sure if any of our, anybody joined us, but I'm happy to answer questions or share anything you'd like.
Great, I thought it was a great presentation, and the fact that some kid said, well, I used the math I learned in another class that they're taking is just, it's great. Because it's just that shared knowledge across the curriculum is just, is great to see being done, you know, with the collaboration between the teachers, as well as just knowing how to apply what they've learned to different, to different classes. So open it up to the committee, are there any questions that anyone had for Ms. Grindel? Mike, you're on mute.
Everyone should be able to unmute themselves.
Okay, I got it. I had one for Liz, and Liz, that was a great presentation. My quick question is, is there a short explanation to what a radical number is in that equation that your woman had?
Yeah, so the short is, it's a way we can represent a number, it's like an approximation. And I think one of the things we talk to kids about a lot of times, they want to like, I know we showed the calculator and the girls chose to use the calculator in it, but you can compare numbers when they're under the radical without even like doing out the decimal point. So sometimes we'll ask a kid a question, and this might be like ringing bells in your head, like leave in terms of the radical. I use that, but yeah, so that's my short explanation. It's just a way we represent, and it has a lot to do, I again, appreciated that the girls picked out the, the right triangle trig, because that's something that they actually can use. We talked to, you know, adults who use it in the field, like if you talk to anyone in construction, and I use my own example, my dad was a builder, and he would like bounce things off me. And I would say, well, give it this way, and he says, no, that's not the way we do it in the field. And he would show me these things, and I would say, oh, you're using a forty-five to forty-five ninety. And so to your point, Mike, like, is the radical really going to be in the real world? No, but when you got to a traitor, you use it in real life, those things do translate, so.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, if not, Ms. Grindel, thanks for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay as long as you choose.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
All right, and next under celebrate student learning is Mr. Newton, our science department chair.
All right, hi, and thanks for having me here also, as we continue STEM night here at the school committee. So I suppose my two comments before I get rolling are first for Mr. Hayes, a radical is what you probably think of as that square root symbol, looks like a weird checkmark. And I'm going to echo what Mr. Long commented on seeing the math in other classes, because that's really what my department is all about, right? Like, I frequently say, when kids sit in math class, as they do for generations now, and say, when am I ever going to need to know how to do this? Many, many times, the answer to that question is in your science class, because we're going to apply it to some natural phenomena. And in that particular example, measuring in the robotics class, the robotics class is one of our high school engineering courses. So that was a direct connection between our two departments there. All right, so I am going to also share my screen, and I am going to end up showing three sort of quick things. One is I'm going to really quickly lead us through a little stuff about vernal pools and what they are and how they work, because we have access to one, I think as many of us know, directly at.
Boston and Worcester. So again, if you want to quickly get COVID off.
You are good to go.
Just to frame what is then really an audio recording of five of our seventh grade students talking about their experience at Gates. And I will say ahead of time, my apologies, the recording is very quiet. Our seventh graders are extra responsible in staying distant and masked, and that did not help with audio recording. But if we turn volume up, it should work fine. And then a quick screencast video that talks about a cool project that our eighth grade science classes are doing. So we kind of refer to our vernal pool as our living lab, which we have really amazing access to. Again, just framing right now, vernal pools are this natural phenomenon, they tend to happen at low points in the topography. And they are dry for about half the year, usually late summer through the fall, they are bone dry. And then in, as winter progresses and snow melts and it rains, typically they fill up with water. And they are really, really, really important resources for a lot of small living things. Everything from frogs and toads to salamanders to insects and all kinds of stuff. Because there's no fish in there to eat them, as some of our students will talk about. Vernal pools directly connect to groundwater, so they're a super important window into health and state of the entire ecosystem. We can test for a lot of stuff that may or may not be in groundwater, because if it's in the groundwater, it's in the vernal pool and vice versa. And it is directly out our front door. Students, you're actually, you know, catching a still frame here of students literally walking out the front door and headed out to the vernal pool and out onto our observation deck. And this was taken actually just last week. You can see the state of the pool, but also it's a great way to tap into some of our experts in the area. So in this case, we see Chris Taylor from North South River Watershed, he's their education person. He works with us on a number of projects from high school environmental down through a number of things at Gates also. So in this instance, he's talking with sixth grade students about how microinvertebrates, basically insect larvae, can be really good indicators of the health of the entire ecosystem based on what we can find in the vernal pool. We also have had Caitlin come out and visit us a few times, she's a grad student at UMass Boston, she also happens to be a Gates alum. And in this instance, she's working with some seventh graders back earlier in the year at what traces may or may not microinvertebrates and other possible pollutants. Students are able to make all kinds of observation, continue to hone their basic science skills. And then thanks to some of our very generous charitable community partners, we have access to a number of really cool pieces of equipment. These happen to be aquascopes, so students can put them down into the water and be able to clearly see what's going on down in there. And we can watch tadpoles swim by and all kinds of fun stuff there. This is a group of sixth grade students just the other day sifting through some water that we scooped out of the vernal pool, looking for some of those so-called microinvertebrates. Here's some of the stuff we found, this happens to be a predaceous diving beetle larva, really good sign of the overall health. There's a tadpole kind of in the bottom there, underneath the insect that probably drowned in the water. Again, another really good sign of overall health and that the water quality is quite high. Here's one of our sixth grade teachers, Ms. Dory Reed, leading some sixth grade students out on the observation deck on some chemical tests. So just continuing to reinforce some of these science concepts. In this case, pH, as well as talking about nitrates and how that impacts the overall health of the pond. So sorry if I got all too teachery there for everybody for a moment. This is again, just an audio recording of five seventh grade students talking about their experience, both in sixth and seventh grade, working at the vernal pool. And this is where I say the recording is rather quiet, so I apologize if you need to turn your computer up. Assuming, of course, that it plays. My apologies, I don't know why it's not playing along nicely.
Hi, my name is Daniel Boden, and I'm explaining what I learned about the vernal pool in sixth grade. So the first thing I learned what a vernal pool actually was, I had no clue that it even existed. I learned that there are tons of creatures in the pool, and there are more creatures than I knew about before. I learned that there was a whole other community of people out there that were painting about that attached to these pools. I thought that was kind of cool. I learned about how the pools fill up seasonally, like in spring, they fill up, and summer they dry out.
Hi, my name is Matilda Grant, and I really enjoyed my seventh grade vernal pool experience. We got to learn about many different animal species that are really dependent on the vernal pool for mating and for safe places to live. We also got to spend time out in nature, which I thought was really fun for us. And then when we went out to the vernal pool, we recorded the weather, the appearance, the water level, and surrounding habitat. And this helped me understanding the different appearances of the vernal pool and how it like changes throughout the year. My experience has taught me to be aware and appreciate vernal pools and helped me learn about many interesting species.
I'm a seventh grade student at Gates, and I really enjoyed working out at the vernal pool with the scientists, because we got to observe lots of wildlife in nature and learn fascinating new things. The scientist was also super helpful and answered all the questions I had about the vernal pool. The time we spent outside helped me as a student, because I could understand more about the vernal pool and what was going on around it, like the weather conditions and how they vary. The wildlife that the scientists helped us get to see up close, like the fairy shrimp, were really impressive. The scientists were very supportive and made the learning experience even better.
Hi, I'm Cole Levens, a student at Gates in grade seven. Here are a few things I learned about the vernal pool. The vernal pool isn't full of water year-round, it fills in the spring when it rains a lot and the snow melts. Because of this, fish are not able to live in the vernal pool. Since the vernal pool doesn't constantly have water fed into it, like a pond, the pool will often dry out in the summer if we experience a drought, like we usually do in Citrus. Furthermore, we learned that there are five types of vernal pools. Shrubby pools, marsh pools, forested pools, open pools, and sparsely vegetated pools. The Gates vernal pool is a shrubby pool, which means that shrubs surround the edges of the pool. Additionally, the Gates vernal pool is an open pool, meaning that there is nothing growing above the pool, like a tree. This means that plants can grow inside of the pool as they receive direct sunlight. If you look at the Gates vernal pool, this is clear with about eighty percent of the pool being vegetated.
Hi, I'm Autumn Laverne, a seventh grade student at Gates Middle School. The vernal pool is easily accessible, making it really good for academic learning. We can also observe a lot of wildlife around, in and around the pool. The pool also has an observing deck for looking out. It's really helpful when you're trying to look at the organisms that live in the pool.
So we get an idea, most of our students, I think, really appreciate the opportunity to do some real-world science learning. And so I will just let this also fairly short video or screencast play. This is from our eighth grade students in a particularly cool program that one of our eighth grade teachers, Ms. Kathy Wilson, has been accepted into for this year. And this one's also going to not want to play.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wilson, an eighth grade science teacher at Gates Middle School.
Hi, I'm Andy.
I'm Sandra.
And I'm Carolyn, a junior student at Gates Middle School.
Each year, the National Geographic Exchange Program pairs up educators from around the world with explorers in the field. The goal of this program is to foster an explorer mindset in students. This is my partner, Violeta Jelaskova, from Bulgaria. She studies cave geology, cave microbiology, and bats, including the white-nosed fungus disease in bats. Together, we have created lessons which connect her work in the field to our curriculum.
We meet with Billy over Zoom, where she teaches us about bats and the white-nosed fungus disease. She shows us photos and videos of her adventures. We get to ask her questions and teach her about Citrus's different ecosystems. Billy has traveled all over the world exploring caves and researching bats. She also performs experiments in her lab at the University of Sofia.
Billy has worked with my students to design a project to track the bat population in Citrus. The Gates PTO generously donated two echolocation devices for us to use on our evening experiments.
We investigated Egypt Beach Marsh, and we used echolocation to determine what species were there. We learned to look for lines with hooks, and in this picture, the bottom hooks are bats hunting for food, and the top hooks are bats communicating with other bats. The species we detected were big brown bat, hory bat, silver-haired bat, and Indian muleta's bat. These are rarely found in Massachusetts and listed as endangered species.
The vernal pool at Gates is another location we explored. Sometimes the species are not identified, so we need to use the pattern on the device to figure out what it is. At Gates, bats are easily visible. The species we detected were big brown bat, hory bat, silver-haired bat, and eastern red bat.
This partnership has been so rewarding, and I hope to be able to work with Billy beyond this school year. We have two ideas in the works for the future. We are hoping to do a long-term study of the bat population at Gates vernal pool, and we also are thinking of adding bat boxes to the Gates campus. One of my goals as an educator is to always bring the world into my classroom, especially during this year of COVID protocols, when students have no field trips to look forward to, and we have a great deal of student isolation. I'm really happy that I was able to give students this experience.
So there's a maybe not as quick overview of some of the especially cool real-life life science and environmental science stuff happening at Gates.
Great, that was amazing, thank you for sharing that. And, you know, we use technology so much over the past year, with them being able to see how we can take that and, you know, take our students outside of Citrus and into these types of programs is, is great to see, and I'm glad that our teachers were able to do so.
Yeah, they're always excited, and it's hard to be, getting kids outside like into something, you know what I mean? Their enthusiasm goes up tremendously.
Yeah, I've driven by the middle school and high school a couple of times, and there's always some group of kids walking around, going to whatever lesson they're going to see, which is just, I mean, it's great that we're able to do it, do it safely, but then be able to just, you know, learn off of the town as well as just out of textbook.
Yeah, science is a verb, it's not something we read, it's something we do.
Cool, I like that.
Are there any questions from the committee from Mr. Newton?
I'd like just to comment to just how, how cool it was to see the kids learning, you know, the vernal pool. Watching that, I was just thinking that there are some school districts that don't have, you know, that, something like that for them to go exploring to, you know, right outside the front door, and how lucky are we to have that? And the bats, that, that was pretty cool, too. You know, but to have, to have the kids holding, you know, that echolocator, you know, hearing the, because could, could they hear the bats talking?
There are some species that are audible, others are high enough frequencies that we as humans cannot hear them, but that little device which plugs directly into an iPad can pick them up and record all of that data and produce those little visuals. And then our expert sitting in Bulgaria, who is legitimately a world-leading expert on bats, is able to help students make sense of all of that data that's sort of automatically collected.
It's pretty cool, thank you.
They are putting a website together that's not quite ready to go public yet, but we'll be looking to get a link to it off of the SPS website, where we can like track all of our bat locations and data and things like that, too. So they're pretty excited about getting that up and running.
That's great.
That'll be great to share.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for presenting tonight, this was a very informative for all of us.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
So next on our agenda is the student report. I know Ms. Tersha has graduated, so congratulations to her. I believe the only person we have tonight is Mr. Kinsley. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, so we've been really busy at the high school recently, as the year comes to a close. But senior week last week was excellent, and we've heard everyone had lots of fun at the events and graduation. This week, the rest of the school has a spirit week.
Uh, this week, um the rest of the school has a spirit week um before final start uh and and we have lots of people uh participating. A Biology MCAS is this Wednesday and Thursday for freshmen. Uh, sports are coming to a close uh with most seasons ending in the next week or so. Um, as we head into Patriot Cup and um state tournaments for some teams. Uh, student governments are electing next year's officers uh and sophomores and freshmen have a celebration um and school and uh class spirit event on June sixteenth. Um, and on June eighteenth, juniors will have a separate um event to gather together as a class. Uh, as we enter um our senior year. So that's what's going on at the high school. Um, thank you.
Great. Thank you for the update. Are there um any questions? From the committee?
Three more weeks.
Yeah.
Everybody's happy.
Yeah, ten more days, but who's counting, right?
Right.
And Johnny, you're a junior, correct?
Yeah, I am.
Um, so obviously as the the year comes to a close, you're welcome to come to as many of our meetings over the summer as you want, but you know, obviously don't feel obligated to. And then, you know, hopefully you and Celia will be back next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so moving on in the agenda, uh for presentations, we have the school improvement plans from our elementary school principals.
Hi, so I'm gonna start. This is Tracy Reardon, Principal of Pawpatack, and I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so thank you for having us. Um, we, the four elementary principals, are excited to share with you our end-of-the-year reflections on our school improvement plans. So as you will remember, um, we worked together and we wrote two goals and each building has the same two goals. The first goal is focused around uh safe and strong reopening. And then the second goal was focused around DEI practices. So once we created those goals together, then we went back to our individual buildings and we worked with our school councils to create action steps to go with those goals. And those action steps reflected the need and the character of each one of our buildings. Some of our action steps were the same um or had similar ideas and some were a little different. Tonight, we're just gonna highlight for you what we've accomplished this year in relation to those um two goals in our school improvement plans and our progress toward those goals.
Great. Thank you. I'm Donna Moffett. Um, we're Cushing School, so I have the pleasure of um reporting out on our first goal, which was our safe and strong reopening. And um I can honestly say, I think, across the elementary, across the district, we did a really great job. We highlighted here in this slide some of the consistent things that we were able to accomplish across the uh across the district. For example, the pivoting in schedules. Uh, D- Desi kept coming up with all different protocols and procedures and it it's almost as if every couple of weeks we had to change and we had to make a difference um and and how we handle some things. So we, normally we would have done one schedule a year. I believe we were three to four schedules by the end of the school year and yet we were able to go from going six feet to three feet masked. Um, being able to make sure that we have mask breaks, that our rooms had a specific capacity, that we went from the hybrid four days to the hybrid five days to the full in-person. And at the elementary level, we went from having no lunch to be able to then accommodate lunch for all of our students. Um, scheduling six lunches and utilizing any room that we had available so that our kids could eat safely um and also be able to socialize. So we did a really great job there. Um, we continue to do our benchmarking. Regardless of what model we were learn, we were teaching in and where our children were learning, we consistently were driving um learning and and instruction so that our kids were growing and making gains. Students, we we benchmarked on a regular basis. And we progress monitored those students who uh we found might be at risk or maybe on a borderline. We continued with our child study teams so that for those kids who might, you know, might need some some more support, we were analyzing them. Our our teachers continued to go through our data um data meeting process with the grade levels and with the specific teachers and educators that work with children again to make sure that we were supporting them uh in order for our kids to continue to make progress regardless of what our situation was for the pandemic this year. We, you know, and as we were, you know, we continued looking at our progress of our students, our literacy bat specialists, our math specialists, special education teacher and general education teachers consistently redid their schedules and made a judge and made adjustments so that they could accommodate the needs of their each individual student. So that was really great. We talked a little bit, we know we continued to do as much as we could consistently across the district in regards to making sure that our pacing and sequencing and the standards that we were covering were consistent in all four elementary schools. Working very closely with our curriculum coordinators, our teachers were able to meet when we were having the early releases on Wednesdays, the um there were teachers who were assigned specific subject areas in every building across each grade level that would meet with our curriculum coordinators in order to make sure that our pacing and sequencing and what we were addressing in each subject area was appropriate and was on par with where we needed to be. When we were no longer able to do that, when we went back to the five-day hybrid model, uh we continued, they continued to can to touch base. Our curriculum coordinators were really great in making sure that there was emails and um connections in Google Classroom and Google Chat and and any way, shape, or form to to continue that work, you know, regardless of whether we had the half-days or not. So it was really great. A lot of work there was done and we were accomplished that. Uh, for our social emotional learning, we're very proud of that because uh you know, I I still think that there's, we don't know the full impact of what the this last year will have on our children socially and emotionally, but I can honestly say that our educators, our school adjustment councils, and our school psychologists have worked very closely to have lunch bunches. Um, both, no matter what platforming we were instructing in, we had the remote, we had hybrid, and then we have in-person snack groups. Uh, they were giving individual counseling, small group counseling, and consistent check-ins on our children. The other thing that was really great during in that whole realm was the fact that our all of our educators, no matter where we were, were consistently reaching out to families and addressing the needs of our families as the best that we possibly could, because we wanted to support not just the child, but every aspect of the child that was possible for us. So um really was a great work in there in that area and um we also, for our kids who are in Remote C, while we were in the hybrid model, we were able to do our, you know, contact, continue with our connections through Connect Ten. And uh students in Cohort C were able to connect with their teachers once to twice a week. What was nice when we were in the remote model on Wednesdays, all three cohorts were able to connect remotely. When we went back to the five-day hybrid, we made sure that our Cohort C students were still able to connect virtually with their in-person peers. Uh, so it was either kids, kids either connected with Cohort A or Cohort B who were also learning in person. Uh, and we did everything that we possibly could to make sure that we we had had those children connected. What I am finding is that toward the end of the year, as we start to prepare and wind down for some of the end-of-the-year activities, uh our PTOs and our educators across the district have been really great to make sure that we continue to include and encompass the children in Cohort C and bringing them in as much as we possibly can in any activities that we're doing. So those are, those are the things that we've accomplished in our first goal.
We just wanted to include some pictures so you could see some of the things that that are how our school looked different um over the year. And I know a lot of this, um, a lot of these pictures you've seen in Thursday Thoughts and also in our weekly newsletters.
Good evening. Rebecca Long, I'm the principal of Jenkins. Pillar two was around our work with diversity, equity, and inclusion and our um social, emotional development teams. Our first bullet, we have DEI training during our staff meetings and professional development days. Um, ideas such as auditing our own libraries, reviewing the literature that we're using to enhance connections to the curriculum across all content areas and thinking through this lens of mirrors and windows. Um, so students can see themselves and see others in what they're reading and their curriculum. Um, we also worked on self-reflection, talked a bit about implicit bias through our staff development. We are also um part of a Harvard Rides grant that was written by Michelle Crawford, John Scott Paletti, Lisa McGuire, myself. Um, we earned that grant to work with about ten different districts um that are also working towards the same goal around diversity, equity, inclusive practices in their in their district. Um, and it supports us with providing action-oriented resources, following through in in an equity improvement cycle. So it allows us to dig deeper and think about how we're gonna move forward as a district. Um, this work will continue into next year, so we're excited to have Jamil on board with us as he has joined our team since he's joined Situate and involved in that work. And we also have, the staff have worked on a shared goal. We had shared goals at the beginning of the school year around implementing um two culturally proficient lessons, acknowledging diverse backgrounds. Our curriculum coordinators have also worked um K to twelve to um review our curriculum and various content areas to ensure that we go back to the idea of mirrors and windows of the way um how we're teaching, what materials we're using, the resources we're using, the language we're using um to best meet the needs of all of our students.
We also all had action steps under this goal of school-wide celebrating differences and each one of the buildings um had, if not one, two or three events where we celebrated differences as a school community. And those, all of those celebrating um activities were grounded in literature using diverse literature, not only with topics, but also diverse authors. Um, all of, four of us um principals attended and participated in the professional development led by Dr. Khaleesi Warnum back in the um fall and winter. And we all used what we learned through that professional development and used it in our faculty meetings to help um our staff continue the DEI work and moving forward. Um, we also all included information and videos in our weekly and bi-weekly newsletters with our families to keep them um sort of in the loop on the progress that we are doing within our schools, with our teachers and our staff toward our DEI practices. So again, under pillar two, these are all um big ideas that we worked on together. It looked a little different in each building based on the character and culture of those buildings. And then we included some pictures um to go with our pillar to our second goal in our school improvement plans. So that is our presentation. We're happy to take any questions. If anybody has any questions for us.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing that information with us. Um, I'll open up to the committee if there are any questions that members of the committee have for the uh principals.
I just have a comment, uh, Mr. Long.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank um the principals for that. Again, I know the theme for me over this past year, at least uh on the elementary level, is that there seems to be true collaboration amongst all of the buildings and all the principals. So um it appears that that theme continues on this project and the school improvement plan, so thank you for that. I also um, I also get the sense that you all were excited um and really believe in the work, you know, at least that the two the two goals that were stated at the beginning of the year. So I think that belief um and excitement about the actual work that's going on you know, has these positive results that you guys displayed today. So I just wanted to thank you for for your efforts and I hope that that can continue uh into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, if if there's other questions or comments, I just wanna echo what what Mr. Gates said. I mean, seeing the collaboration and just, you know, the amount of work that's been done to get us from, you know, September to now where we've had that collaboration, we've had, you know, teachers and staff continuing to move the curriculum forward as well as, you know, just that that social emotional piece and the wellness piece. It's been great to see as a parent especially, so um, you know, seeing your staff, thank you for that, all of that work.
Thank you.
There any other questions or comments from the committee?
I'm all set.
Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so at this time, uh, it's the first opportunity for public comment in the meeting. Uh, there's one other later on in the meeting, but if people have any questions or comments, please raise your hand um and then I can I can call on you to be able to speak. People should have the ability to unmute themselves at this time. Uh, Ms. Hanley. And then as people go, uh, just a reminder, just speak your name and address for the record.
Sorry, Mike, did you call on me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Josephine Hanley, I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And I just wanna raise um my concern at the decision not to notify the parents of the children who were named or pictured in the slideshow that has become known as the middle school incident. Um, I don't wanna make any comment on the content or make any judgment on the children that, you know, that that made the slides. Not nothing about that at all. Um, and I appreciate your response, Mr. Burkhead. I know that, as you said, there was thoughtful consideration and the decision not to notify parents was with the hope of not causing any more harm. I think that a lot of the harm in this case was done by the very public airing of the incident. Uh, media statements, decisions by a number of elected officials to publicly, um, you know, mention it, denounce the actions of these middle school kids. Um, but we cannot undo that harm by denying parents the opportunity to address this with their children if they were in fact targeted. And my concern is three. Number one, primarily for the children who were targeted. Um, I mean, we know what happens when children get targeted and without the support of the parents to work through it, they can quickly become depressed, become socially anxious, and become an even greater target. Um, so that's my primary concern. Secondly, you know, we have over the years had a number of cases where parents have raised concerns and been told the district knows best. The teachers and staff are the experts. Parents don't need to be told that the district knows better than them how to address these things with their children and they shouldn't be denied the opportunity to work with these real incidents with their children. And the third thing is that the decision not to notify parents, I think, puts us in violation of our own anti-bullying policy that the school committee has put together, the Gates Handbook. And I believe it's section six oh three of DESI guidelines that says that in cases of harassment or bullying, that there will be prompt notification of the parents of both the target and the aggressor. So I would just like to ask that we reconsider that and give parents the opportunity to help their children address this appropriately. Thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you for your comment. I I can take back the, your comment on the anti-bullying policy and and get back to you on that, Ms. Hanley. Um, any other comments from the public? Uh, there is one other uh opportunity for that later in the evening, but uh next on the agenda are the leadership reports, starting with Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to uh thank the uh principals in their school councils for the excellent work on their school improvement plans. Uh, and their staffs, obviously, for implementing the work. And also the committee's um acknowledgement of the hard work that's gone into getting symmetry in our elementaries and consistency in our decision-making and the experience for the children and families at each of the schools, uh while keeping their own identity and culture. So I think that was a huge success for us this year, uh in an extremely tough year. Uh, school improvement plans have not been done in the last few years, so we brought them back. We did them together, uh creating a template, and I'd like to see how the principals took the goals from the district and the superintendent's goals, made them their own. And I'd like to see how the principals took the goals from the district and the superintendent's goals, made them their own. And then you saw the benefits there. So I think that's a really great process and I want to commend all that work on that, so thank you. So just some updates. It's certainly been a wild year and no pun intended, but we had a bear on the loose today. And, you know, I, I just wanted to let people know that our wonderful police were really good at communicating with, with me and the school district and also supplying officers to support our area schools. So we were always safe and they continue to monitor the situation all day. And, you know, so there was never a question of safety for us. So we proactively got out and shared that information with the community. But I did want to update the committee that at this stage, the environmental police were also brought in. And it's their belief that the bear is moving on out of town. I don't know where yet, but they're going to continue to monitor the situation if it gets dangerous or if the bear pops back out in Situate, we'll be notified and continue to the same protocol. So just wanted to commend everybody involved with that and keeping our schools safe and the, and the good communication that was between the police and the schools. Just a quick COVID update. Today's the first, last week was the first week and I can't remember, I don't know if we've had a week yet, where we've had zero cases of COVID in the schools. So that's a really optimistic and great news. So I want to, I want to thank everybody for continuing to do the work to, to make this safer place for all of us. So just wanted to kind of update everyone that there was zero cases last week in our schools and so far zero cases this week. Some other good news. A lot going on at the high school, as Mr. Kingsley was saying earlier. John was talking about in his report. I was honored to speak last week at the display of excellence for the National Honor Society Math and World Language, Honor Societies inductions were held. And I just want to thank all the advisors and all the hard work they put in and as well as the high school leadership team. It was a beautiful ceremony. It was a lot of students. Certainly, last but not least, to commend all those students for the hard work into getting into one of those societies. Really hard to do. And it was really just a great thing to be part of, back to getting normal again, to seeing those students inducted. So that was a really great part of my week last week, wanted to share that. Also, we had the new tradition of the seniors send-off in which the seniors decorated their cars and drove around campus. It was really cool to see the smiles on their faces and the excitement getting ready for graduation. And then certainly culminating in graduation on Friday. You know, just to shout out to our local weather expert, Mr. McGuire, who we counted on for making the call Friday evening. And postponing it an hour was the magic and the sun broke, rainbows came out. And 250 seniors at Situate High School graduated. And as a former high school principal, I want to tell you, that's one of the hardest things that I used to have to do is prepare for our graduation. It takes many months of planning. And to do so in a pandemic with weather as an, as a possible obstruction and also with the changing, ever-changing guidelines from DESI, it was just handled wonderfully by Dr. McGuire and her team. And it, the end product, the final product was outstanding. And just want to thank all the, all the families that attended. It was a really electric crowd and the speeches by our students were really powerful and insightful. So I want to commend our students as well. So just a great night. I really enjoyed it. So I want to congratulate all of the seniors. You did it. And my hat's off to you and your families. Make us proud. Next, I have an update. We, last Friday was School Resource Officer, Ms. Sarah Arseneau's last year in the schools after committing five years in that role. So on behalf of the staff, students and families and administration, I'd like to thank Mrs. Arseneau for her dedication and commitment to our school community. At the same time, welcoming new SRO and Situate High School graduate Nick Sherry. Mr. Sherry will be our School Resource, School Resource Officer, ongoing, effective now. So he was on, on campus today actually, meeting folks and protecting us from the bear. So welcome aboard. And last, I just have a couple of sealer shout-outs. So I want to congratulate our nurse leader, Ms. Kelly Roach, who was recently appointed to the Town of Situate's Board of Health. I think she'll bring much knowledge and perspective to the board, so congratulations, Kelly. And I want to thank Mr. Smith and his fourth grade class at the Cushing Elementary School. They invited me to dress up as your favorite book character last week. And I went in and I was just really impressed with, first of all, the outfits, the accompanying props that the students had, but more so by the depth at which they explained the books and how they were able to articulate what they read and how they understood it. It was really powerful to me. It was, you know, more like a high school level for some of these kids. It was really great. So, and they were excited about talking about books, which really made me happy. We were outside. It was a really great environment. So just wanted to shout out to those students and their families and also to Mr. Smith for inviting me. So really a great, a great week and looking forward to more of the same this week. So that's my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. And I know there's been a lot of great feedback from Ms. Arseneau, the work she's done over the course of the last five years. So, you know, congratulations for her for, you know, all the work she's done and for moving on. We're definitely getting a new SRO, the biggest of the schools as well. So open up to the committee, any questions for Superintendent Burkett? Quiet crowd tonight. I just have one question for you. So I know that you're already starting construction in Green, at the Green Bush key station where they, we had previously kept our buses overnight. What is the, just curious because this usually comes up every year, what is the plan for the buses moving forward?
I think the plan we had this year worked. I think when, when the students came back and we had to make one last adjustment for parking them on campus. We made that adjustment with input from the principals and even community members and parents. So I want to thank them. I think we have that resolved now. I'll defer to Dr. Dutch. But are we, are we expecting the same plan for next year, Dr. Dutch? I think that's my understanding.
The, it's really dependent upon the number of students that are looking for parking passes. I, I think we're going to try to find an alternative spot for the buses while we have opportunity, but there's no guarantee. And, and like I said, it, it can work as it is depending on how many seniors and seniors are looking for parking. We would like to try and find another spot for the buses, but we haven't as yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dutch.
Yep.
So if there's no other questions for the superintendent, I will turn it over to our Dr. Dutch for his business and finance report.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. So you hopefully can see the capital projects update, which is what I'll be speaking on this evening. We really have two years combined in our, in our capital projects. So I'll go through, go through all of this. First is technology and we've got two years' worth of technology. We've, we've already in FY21 purchased 250 Chromebooks for next year. And we are in the process of purchasing interactive displays, which are basically what we had with projectors and smartboards. They're now newer devices that are basically what looks like a television screen, but they're interactive like a, a smartboard was. And they have a little, little better capability and less expensive than the smartboard with greater durability because you're not buying a projector on the smartboard. So that's the $100,000 that was allocated for FY21. For FY22, we will also continue to purchase more Chromebooks and more interactive displays, replacing some of the carts in different classrooms. We'll also be replacing laptops. We have a five-year cycle. Laptops, we generally keep them for five years and then transition them to other uses from, that don't require the kind of capability that they initially were intended for. And then we also may be purchasing a Wi-Fi controller. It's something that is close to an end of life and we're waiting to find out if it'll continue to be supported by the vendor, by the manufacturer. So those are our technology purchases. The high school locker rooms is a phase one of, actually phase two of the project. Phase one was the design. Phase two is the renovation, so we'll get a little more detail. So, so far, phase one is done, which were the architectural plans. We have developed and published the bid documents. Bids are due in the superintendent's office by June 10th at 10:00 a.m. And the goal is that the work is to be completed by August 31st, 2021, by the time we return to school. What are we doing? We are renovating the boys and girls phys ed locker rooms and the fitness and training room, the Kobe Cutler Center. Specifically in the Kobe Cutler Center, new flooring, both in the weight room and the mezzanine, replacing all the lockers in the boys and girls PE locker rooms, replacing the windows, all of the plumbing fixtures, including showers, toilets, sinks, partitions, all of that will be replaced. And then obviously the flooring has to be replaced as well in that process. Wampanoak Portico is failing, so it needs to be replaced as well at a cost of $175,000. Update on the status, again, the engineering design is complete. The bid specs are complete and have been posted and are due June 10th as well at 10:00 a.m. Details of that, the work will begin at the end of June and will be completed before school starts. And basically, we're replacing all of the posts, the roof of the portico and then the sidewalk, which will have to be demolished and replaced in the process of installation. Wampanoak Parking Lot is an FY22 project. And it is, it is more than just replacing the parking lot. The project will be awarded. We're not going to put it out to bid. There are a number of approved contractors on the state's COMBIES list. Again, it is scheduled to be completed before the start of school. The, the challenge is that there's a narrow window between when, when summer programs end and school starts. Fortunately, it's, it's an expensive project, but not a time-consuming one. The details, the sidewalk will be rebuilt around near the parking lot. There'll be piping installed for drainage with new, new drains. And then the parking lot asphalt will be replaced. So they'll take up everything that's there, take care of the drainage and then replace the asphalt. And then finally, the high school flooring phase two. You know, we did the phase one, the calf, the library this year. Next year, hopefully, we will again during a timeframe when school is, is not open, one of the holidays, we will replace the flooring on the second floor. And it's phase two of three, and then the last phase will be in FY23. So that, that's kind of an update, that kind of, that is an update of where we are with the capital projects for this summer and next year. You can see that we're pretty busy, a lot going on. And I'm anxiously anticipating the bids for the, the two bidded projects. I think part of the challenge is there's a lot of work out there and our timelines are tight. So I, I worry that we're not a prime, prime project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dutch. Are there any questions from anyone on the committee?
I just, I have a couple, Mr. Long. I guess first of all, Dr. Dutch, thanks for that. I think that I've, I've always, I had asked Dr. Dutch to put this together because I feel as if the process for capital is, for, for my perspective, it just takes such a long time. And I want folks on the committee and others that are part of this meeting to recognize that all of these projects were voted on at town meeting, either this past year or the prior year. And this is just the final phase of them actually getting done. So it's nice to get a, you know, I don't know, semi-annual update on exactly the status of, of those projects. But you addressed some of my concerns is that do you, realistically, do you think, you know, I would say the high school locker room, I think that originally was, you know, estimated maybe a couple of years ago. So do you think pandemic and other, all else being equal, I mean, realistically, do you think that that could come in on budget? And, and I think I know the answer, but if, if the bids come in significantly higher, do we need to delay and then go to town meeting and ask for those additional dollars, correct?
Well, I, I think there's, there's several options if the bids come in higher. And you're right, you know, the, the, the information that we got originally is, is at least two years old. With the amount of work out there, that, that drives the cost up. I think they included, when I read the documents, an escalator in there already. So they anticipated that it wasn't going to happen when they were bidding. So they, they put a cost escalator in there for time, for labor and, and in some cases, material. I think the reality is, we know construction materials are, are going through the roof price-wise because there's such a shortage and there are so many people doing projects. This is commercial, so it's a little bit different. And it's, it's not necessarily a lot of lumber. It's, you know, flooring, locker room, lockers, plumbing fixtures. And there doesn't seem to be as much of a backup on some of those materials. If, if indeed it does come in higher and the option is to go back to town meeting and ask for some additional funds for the project or to scale back the project, then that, that becomes a decision that the, the school committee would need to make as to which direction we would want to go.
Okay. And then I'd asked this before, I just want to be certain. I know that, only because I live right across from Wampanoak School. This is, it is the main parking lot, but it's also that access road that go, that, you know, splits the new playground with the ECC playground. Is that also part of it?
I believe that it is.
Okay.
And I'd have to look back at the specs, but I'm pretty certain it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, I had one question for Bob.
Yep, go ahead.
Bob, any penalty clauses on the high school gym project or the Wampanoak project? As far as not being done on time?
There is, there is for the high school locker room project. It's $1,000 a day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Dutch?
Well, thanks for the update, Dr. Dutch. I was going to ask the same question Peter asked, so thank you for the answer.
You're welcome.
No, it's nice to know that these, these projects will get started and hopefully, you know, be in place by the end of, you know, by the start of school year. If, you know, to follow up with Peter's question about the locker room project, is that something that, like if the cost is too high, is there some part of it that we can do? With, you know, and then, you know, could it be like a two-part or two, you know, add a phase, I guess, to it?
Yeah, there, there definitely is. I mean, I, I've spoken briefly with Mr. Dylan and a couple of the, the physical education teachers. And for example, the, the students don't seem to use the showers. And the lockers are, because in the, in the girls' room in particular, they're pretty ineffective. They're very small, can't fit much in them. So you could start the demo, the demolition of some of that this now for in the summer, get it cleaned up and then keep the locker room as usable space without those items that are, that are not used anyway. So you, you could do, do it in, in parts. But we would have to modify the bid specs in the negotiation with whoever the contractor is. And we have that capacity because And we have that capacity because it's it's been put out as a as a request for proposals and given the value of it. There is negotiation and modification allowed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just had two questions for you, Dr. Dutch. In terms of the Wampanoag work, is there are there any programs or usage of the school over the summer that you know, people should understand that the the work is being done, either enter into a separate door or parking a different spot just so they can access the school?
There are, there are programs there in the summer. You know, the portico would would, if we start it, and depending on how long it takes, the front entrance would be not usable for a period of time. The parking lot project, we would have to close down the parking lot for for a fixed period of time. And and have some alternative parking available, and that's something we need to look at. But again, that that's a project that really could could get done in in a week or so. You know, what, once the demolition of of the existing parking lot is done, the drainage piping and installation drains takes the longest. The actual laying of the asphalt and the substrate is is pretty quick. They they do that very quickly.
Okay, and and one thing just to be cognizant of, I know when they redid some of the asphalt thing in the middle school. Yeah, I think there were some issues there just in terms of having it set correctly, so you know, more for your perspective, just to make sure that you know, once the work is done, make sure there are any issues, people start to use the asphalt in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, the the specs are pretty specific as to the the amount of materials is, you know, that are under is underlayment, basically. That are needed and required. You know, so between Mr. Kelly, Mr. Dylan and myself, we'll be there making sure that that they're doing what they're supposed to. Effectively functioning as owner project managers, clerk of the work, so to speak.
Okay. In terms of the Wampanoag Portico, if either we don't get any offers or the the bids come in way higher than than the than what we we have budgeted now, is there are there any safety concerns if the work doesn't get done this this summer or, you know, any contingencies if we need to, or that we have to do with the portico?
There weren't at the beginning of this school year, any concerns from a safety perspective. We would have it re inspected to make sure that there weren't any as we start in the fall, and if we need to do something to reinforce any of the the steel columns, we would, we would address that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
And I don't think we need a a large update, but can we just get an update on how the bids come in either at the end of this week or at our meeting on the 21st?
I I definitely will. I'll I'll have the superintendent send you an email with the bids.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so moving on to new business, the next item on the agenda is the proposed meeting dates for the 2021, 2022 school year. So in our backup, we received a marked up school calendar with the dates that we would be meeting, starting August 30th and then going through to to June 27th the next year, typically we'd be meeting every other Monday. And then in terms of if there's either a school vacation week or a holiday, it might push us out to meeting three weeks instead of two. I'll open up to the committee just to see if there are any questions or concerns in the proposed dates that we received. And if there are, okay, so if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the dates for our 2021, 2022 meetings.
So move.
A second?
Okay. Okay, so take a roll call vote, Long, yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
And I'm bummed.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And these are, the just the public technologies are on top of the three meeting days, we've already scheduled for the summer, one in July and two in August. And then these will be put up on the school website later this week. Okay, so next on the agenda is our subcommittee liaison requirements. I'm going to try to show my screen and I apologize if I totally screw this up. Can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect. So in our backup, we also received a list of all of the liaison positions that or subcommittee positions that we as a school committee hold. So there are my different departments or other committees in town that we liaison with. We also have liaison positions with each of the six schools in town, where one member of the school committees represents the school committee with that with that school. I did receive some feedback from members of the committee so far. Put those in to the document, I think. Ms. Brandalini, I know the charter review is still ongoing, so you had requested to stay on that review, which I think makes sense. One change from prior years, the board of selectmen liaison position is usually only held by the the chair of the school committee. I did notice that the the board of selectmen have two liaison positions to the school committee. And I know Ms. Brandalini had also expressed some interest in in being on that liaison position. So I've heard her done as well. So I guess I'll open it up to the committee and I can go person by person, just to see if there are any interest in any of the committees that are that are out there. So I'll start with Mr. Gates.
Uh, yeah, I would, I have interest in the financial forecast on the town liaison side and I guess I would advise, I'm not sure it's that much, but I would be interested in advisory as well. In terms of the, do you want to do just the liaison positions and do school subcommittees after that?
Yeah, let's go town liaison positions and schools. Yeah, we'll go town liaison positions first, we'll just go
Okay.
Section by section.
And the only other comment I would make, I think, Mike, you and I talked briefly about, maybe Superintendent Burkett can can jump in, but the is the, is the, wait, the public building committee, that's not the same as the, is that the same as the new, the new school committee or not?
No, it's different.
Okay, then I'll withhold my comment.
Okay. And I will just say, as we go through, so the finance, the person on the financial forecast position has typically also been on the the finance subcommittee, just because those two go hand in hand as we go go through and start building up the budget. Mike, Hayes, I'd express some interest in being in that finance committee. Is that something you're willing to give up or is that something you wanted to to stay on?
If you, if you, if you're interested in it, Michael, I'm happy to let you take it for, you know. I mean, I had some other preferences as well, obviously, but if if I'm not gonna be a pig out, be happy to let you continue, let you go for it.
Okay, yeah, no, I just want to make sure if there's something you wanted to keep, I would have, would have kept.
Well, I would, but if you want it, you can, you can certainly have it. It's good for another perspective, especially with smart guys.
Well, in that case, I'll give you next track at the list, Mike.
Next what?
I'll let you, I'll let you express your opinion next in any liaison positions that you may want to be on.
Okay.
And I know, I know some of these do say that there's just one person in the past. You know, we can go as high as two on any of these positions, if there's a voting position on these, such as like the capital planning. I know we've had two in the past, but just making sure that we if we have two people, that only one, one is a voting member, but I'll open up to you, Mike.
Well, the only, I mean, I'd be happy to stay on to with the planning board. And I think one of the reasons I want to do that is that I would be my preference to remain and on the on the school building committee. And there could be instances where planning planning board would have some discussions with the schools on the school to be built, so I think it's logical for I mean, we, I think we're gonna have two people on the school building committee, if I'm not mistaken. And I think it's logical that at least one of them or one of them be, there is a liaison to the planning board. So I'd like that.
Yep, no, okay, no, I agree with it. And that's one, is there any other liaison position that you're interested in, Mike?
No, I mean, if unless there's people who want to get off some liaisons and we can talk, you know, we can we can talk about that, then. But if Janice and Paul want to stay where they are. It's fine with me too.
Okay, so Janice, why don't I open it up to you then next?
I'm okay staying on public building. And master plan advisories coming to a close, they're going to be presenting. You know, the that, you know, that they finished up, they're going to be presenting to the public the the master plan. It, so I don't know if Peter is still interested in S E F.
That's a subcommittee, you can have that one, though.
Yeah, I'll put you in there now, Janice.
I have to say, I did, I did not have any role last year with S E F, prior years I did, but last year I did not. More than welcome to have it.
And then in terms of any of the other liaison positions, Janice, is there anything else you're interested in? If it if it's wrapping up, I might just, it might make sense that you stay on the master plan advisory just until it closes, then we can just take it on to liaison position next year. Nicole, you're next.
Yes, hi, you already, I mean, I already have my, I already mentioned my preferences. I guess for, I mean, you and I are in recreation, but I'm not even as sure what that entails. I feel like I've been on it two years in a row and haven't actually. Maybe I should close my mouth and stay on recreation.
That happens.
Yeah, I I had reached out to Rick, I think, twice last year, and they said they didn't have anything really with the school committee at that time.
Especially this year too, so that makes total sense. So I, I mean, I'm fine with staying there.
Okay.
And you know how I feel about capital planning, it's kind of like, it's a big commitment and I've done it twice, so I'm happy to give that up to anybody else who's interested in that.
Okay. So open up up then to the other three members of the committee, I I wouldn't mind being on it, but if there's someone else that wanted to be on this committee, then a liaison position, you can definitely add you.
For which one? Capital planning?
It can be all yours, Mike. Nicole, Nicole experienced the same exact thing that I did for the same period of time, so again, yep.
And if Nicole wants to rock, I can, I can be on, I can take her place on that, Mike.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so one last chance, are there any anyone else have any preferences or joining any of the other liaison positions before we move on?
The D E I, one. I don't know if Nicole or Mike are still interested in staying on that.
You gotta hold up.
Janice, hold on one minute. We're just in the liaison positions, we'll get that.
Oh, okay, alright.
I'll let you get first crack. Okay, so if not, I'll start there then, Nicole and Mike, I know you're on the the D E I subcommittee now. Janice is showing some interest or either of you wanting to move off of that or?
I mean, that's the, I know Mike's on the town one.
Right, that was what I was just going to say, so I think there was, we had a little confusion, I think, because we only have Mike on the town one.
Yeah, we have a lot of confusion.
Yeah. But I think it got somehow mushed together with our anti racism resolution subcommittee, well, I think we just, I don't know, get a little stumbling through this, but so, I mean, that's a good point, Janice. Are they two separate things? Is there even anything school side that we?
And now we have Jamila as well.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's really just a liaison, it's a non voting position.
Right. So Janice, you were looking at being on the school committee side of that?
Yeah, Janice and I were school committee side and then Mike was town, that's sort of how it flushed out ultimately. But I don't know what works going forward. I'll do whatever.
I'll do whatever, true, the only thing I will say on the town side for me, they meet on Tuesdays and I have a Tuesday commitment every Tuesday at the exact same time on a a private board that of meeting that I have to attend, so that has become difficult as well, so. But I can try and work that out if no one else wants to get on that committee.
Okay. Well, Janice, were you looking to be more on the school side or the town side?
Um, maybe the school side, sorry, I keep getting like kicked off my internet, even though I'm, I was sitting right next to my router.
Yep, that's fine.
Um, I'm sorry, did Mike say that he, it's the town ones too much or a lot?
I have a conflict every week, but I can try and work that out on the other end if nobody else is interested in being on the town one.
We have like
I was just gonna say that, we have like Mike, Mike, remember you and I did, you were sort of the capital main person and I was like the alternate, so maybe you and I could do that again for town side.
Sounds good.
As long as we talk, we'll be on the same page and all good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think this brings up a good topic where I've always had a difficult time understanding what a liaison subcommittee is, and I did talk for for a little while to the town D E I chair and what the or what the subcommittee or I guess in this case, it's really a, I think it's really a liaison role to the town D E I. I don't think it's actually a subcommittee, right?
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's not a sub, there's not a town subcommittee necessarily, I don't really know how it should be reflected, but we did talk and I think I admit, fully admit, there was definitely confusion at the beginning in terms of what the school representative's role was, where the they, they didn't even know there was a school rep. So the question is, how often does our representative need to attend those meetings? And I think we agreed, you don't necessarily need to attend all of them as long as they're not talking about something school related. If it's on the agenda, school related, then someone from the school side should be there, but you know, that's for the liaison slash those folks in the committee to determine, but as Mike said, it it's what, it's two Tuesdays a month, so it's pretty rigorous commitment.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yep.
Yeah, so again, I think you're right. To be defined.
Yeah, and I think you're right, after, I can reach out to the town and then that might end up falling under the liaison positions versus, you know, an actual subcommittee of the schools.
Yeah.
Mr. Adams, I saw you raise your hand, you should be able to unmute, do you have a comment you want to add in there?
I did, but I think Maureen was up before me.
Well, it's not really a time for public comment at this point.
Okay, well, so what I wanted to say is that there this may, this may shift because that, because they're actually, they're actually like a number of D I kind of committees kind of things. And I think at some point, we may have one group that has everyone together. The other thing, an update that's happening is that there's going to be a team developing, a freedom team that's going to happen that have representation from different groups too. So this, this thing may shift, I'm willing to work with whoever on the school committee to figure this out so that we can get a synergy of all of this energy and all of this this love for doing for these efforts together so that we can, we can, we can work this out, we can figure it out, that's all I wanted to to share.
Right, that's great.
Okay. If we want to, if we vote on this tonight, what we could do is take the D E I If we want to, if we vote on this tonight, what we could do is take the DEI piece out of it, and then we vote that position once, that, that cohesion is finally identified.
Yeah, I like that pieces are going to come together. That's good.
Yep, that, that's a good point. Thank you, Jamil.
So Mike, should, I, should Mike, Nicole and I get together at some point? Okay.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe.
Absolutely.
And then going through for each of the, the remaining subcommittee positions. So like I said earlier, I expressed an interest in finance. Peter, is that something that you still want to be on? Was anyone else in the committee looking to be on that?
Yeah, that would be, that would be great.
It makes sense, Mike, I think, because.
No, I agree.
Chairman, for you to be on the finance, yeah.
Okay.
So, Mike, are we going to change the collective bargaining tonight, or are we going to wait?
I was actually just going to get to that.
Oh, okay.
So no, there is still some bargaining going on. I know Nicole and Peter, I talked to you both online, offline. I know you both expressed interest in being part of the collective bargaining subcommittee. I think it makes sense to, I mean, we can vote that tonight, but it would just, that piece would take effect once the ongoing negotiations are completed. So hopefully in the next, in the short term. So Janice, are there any other subcommittees that you are, you requested SEF, or any other subcommittee that you had interest in?
Uh, no, I mean, policies, you know, that's riveting. And, you know, I don't mind doing the sick leave bank, I don't mind continuing that unless somebody else has interest in it. It is, you know, if somebody else wants, wants to turn with that, I'm okay with, you know, either one of those, you know, passing it along, staying, staying put.
And I don't mind staying on policy unless someone else wanted to be on it. I think we met probably a half dozen times this year, I think. To try and figure one meeting in the near future, but if someone else wanted to be a part of that, they could have that.
Me and you, still.
Sounds fun. In terms of the technology subcommittee, Mike, is that something that you still wanted to do?
Well, sure. We called it whatever. I think we've met once, but I, I'm happy to stay on that as well as sick leave bank, but, uh, the sick leave bank. And Pete, you, I mean, and Mike Long, you should be on the finance as well, right?
So I am, yep, I'm on there.
Oh, because I still see it as me and Pete Gates, but.
On the, there's a second column, Mike, that has Peter.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry, yeah. We'd like to be on the building committee as well.
Did anyone else also want to be in the school building committee with Mike?
So this, this is, this committee will really be the beginning stages of the elementary project, correct?
Correct.
I don't mind doing that if nobody else is.
I know it's.
Tough, because you know it's going to be a lot, it's.
And it's going to go on for years, so I, I'm trying to figure out from a committee's perspective, potentially what's the most beneficial.
What we've done in the past, Peter, is if there's a school committee person on that building committee, and they've become no longer a school committee member, they be, they continue on as a town member, public member, and then a school committee person can get put on.
Mike, would they need to change the charter though to include another public person, or would someone have to resign? Do you know that?
I don't know, I don't know. It was, I think over the course of the years of, of the, of the Gates School, from start to finish, you know, people came and people went.
Yeah, it's gonna hap, it's absolutely going to happen.
Yeah.
I would like to get involved at some point, but I think that I could, I can, I can defer to, to the two of you, I think it's fine.
And Peter, I remember the last time we did this, you know, they looked at the, the commitment and how often and when the committee was meeting, and then, you know, there was another review to see if people could do it, and then what made sense, so.
Great, great.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a good plan.
Okay. So the West Cork Sister City, I received a couple of emails here and there. I have no problem transferring this if someone else wanted to be on it, but there's really no work from a school perspective.
It's all yours.
Perfect. All right, and then the last point in this section is the stipend positions.
Does it, does it make sense to have Nicole and I on it as far as the collective bargaining, or no?
I think that makes sense. I think in the past, that's how we've done it.
I'd do that.
Yeah, that's fine by me too.
Okay, and Jamil, I saw you raise your hand again. Do you have another comment you wanted to add?
Dr. Dutch did.
Okay, Dr. Dutch, you have something you wanted to add?
I was going to say something about the school building committee, but you've squared it away, so nothing to add.
Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing if people are raising their hands, but if you have a comment again, just, just feel free to speak in. Okay, and then the last section, and I know this is riveting for our public audience, so it's just slowly wrapping up, is the school council positions. So typically, one member of the school committee is, is linked to each school council. I can't be on heavily because my wife is also in that school council. But I'll open it up to the committee to see if there are any specific schools that they wanted to be on the council for. I'll open it up. I wouldn't mind being on Gates. I haven't been on that one in the past.
So you.
Perfect. Peter, is there one that you wanted to be linked to then?
I guess I, if I had a preference, if I had a choice, I would probably take the high school. But I'm curious how often you guys attend these meetings. I, I'm probably, I go to, historically, they're monthly, and I, I generally go, but I'm not sure how often you guys, how often we're expected to attend, I should say. Now, this year's been kind of odd just because they haven't been held as regularly, but.
Yeah, I think part of it is timing too, Peter. I know, you know, Haveli's usually at, at six o'clock at night once a month, whereas when I was on Jenkins a number of years ago, it was a little harder because it was at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And I mean, if we can't make it, I think it's just making sure that we, we connect with the building principal to make sure that we know anything that was discussed as part of the council meetings.
All right, so if I, if you're asking for my input, I would, I would prefer the high school, but it's, it doesn't really matter.
Okay. Mike, does that work for you?
I'm sorry, I was muted. That's fine with me.
Mike, is there a council position that you wanted to have?
I think Haveli's the only one I've never been on. Is that what you're getting off, Mike?
Uh, no, Nicole is on there now.
Oh, okay.
I think she expressed an interest to, yeah, she's willing to give up Haveli.
Say that again?
She's willing to give up Haveli.
Okay, fine. But thank you.
If somebody wants to switch, oh, I'm sorry, take Wapatac. I've been on Wapatac for a long time, I feel like. Elaine, I love Wapatac, but.
It doesn't matter to me, Janice. I mean, I've been on pushing for a long time too, but.
Want to switch?
Pushing's easy for me, sure.
Alright. Very sad.
Nicole, do you have, do you have a preference between Jenkins or Wapatac?
Oh, no, I don't care. I'll take Jenkins, I guess, since it's the next one on the list.
And I know we all have one, and typically one person gets two of these council positions. Is there anyone that wanted Wapatac? If not, I'll take it.
Wow, that's awesome.
So going through this, it seemed like we were able to come to a pretty good consensus. With the one thing being, we'd work through the DEI position and come up with a, a new vote on that in the future. So there are no questions or concerns. I would entertain a motion to accept the liaison assignments as presented, with the exception of the DEI liaison slash subcommittee.
The collective bargaining too, or?
Uh, in, yeah, in collective bargaining, not taking place after. This round of negotiations wraps up.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the liaison and school subcommittee and elementary liaison positions as presented, removing the DEI and collective bargaining.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Long, yes. Brandalini?
Yes.
Limblon?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
And Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Again, I apologize if that was agonizing for the people in the meeting. And Jeannie, I, I'll just send you this word document later tonight, so that you have it all. Moving on, it is the second opportunity, second and last opportunity for public comment. So if you want to raise their hand, they can, I'll, I'll call on you. The first person is Maureen Conley.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Conley. I've lived in Situate for around four years. Prior to that, I lived in another community for 30 years, and I was on a school committee for nine years. I don't have any children in the schools here. They're long out of school. But certainly, I'm very interested in what goes on with the schools as my tax dollar mostly goes towards education, and the children are our future. Education is extremely important. But anyway, I just wanted to start off, if I could give you a few suggestions as to what we did when I was on the school committee. We started every single meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and as we just had Memorial Day, we had D-Day yesterday, June 6th. We have Flag Day next Monday, June 14th, and we can celebrate how we're all Americans and how our veterans worked hard for us to ensure that we have our freedoms today. Some of them made the ultimate sacrifice. So I'm hoping as, you know, you were looking at dates for next year and agenda items, et cetera, that you would take a look at saying the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of the meeting. It's a nice way to start the meeting, and there are many communities that do start their meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then, secondly, I really wasn't paying that much attention to the schools until just very recently. Like I said, my kids have been long out of school. But anyway, what got me first looking at the schools was I saw an article on the front page of the Ledger about an incident at the middle school, and it perked my curiosity. I kind of wondered why it was on the front page, because both the Situate Police Department and the Plymouth County District Attorney said that there was no crime here. There was no malice here. And I thought about the times that we're in, and the age of the kids. They're 11 and 12 years old. Adolescents, hormones are raging, and we've been involved in a pandemic for so long, we have been isolated from their friends. And I just really wonder if, you know, all of that was taken into consideration. It was meant to be private and did not become public until the school administration decided that it should be public. And like Mrs. Healy said, I do agree that there was way too much public attention given to this issue. And then, you know, I thought to myself, you know, why is this being publicized so much? Is there an agenda here? So I looked at the school website, I looked at the school committee page, and I looked on the school committee page that it said that Situate, what, Situate Public Schools were systemically racist. I do not believe that Situate is racist, nor do I believe that Situate Public Schools are racist. And it really troubled me to see that statement. And I think if you set negative expectations for people, then people will meet you with negative results. And I really don't understand this identity politics as far as identifying people in all these little groups. I listened to the president over the weekend, and he did say over the weekend that he didn't believe that the country was racist. However, he did believe that we were systemically racist. And what he meant by that is that we should be paying reparations. So I ask you, is that what you're talking about here? Certainly, none of us were here when slavery took place in this country. I really believe that we should all be treating people the same, and that is with human decency and kindness. And, you know, if we all took that lesson, I think we would be a better school community. And also, oh, is that, is that my two minutes?
Um, so you have one last point to make? Sorry, I thought you were done, there was a pause.
Excuse me?
I, I thought you were done because you paused. Do you have one more comment to make?
I don't, I don't have anything written, so I'm, I'm just thinking as I go along. So, but anyway, I think if you speak with the Situate Police Department and the Plymouth County DA, they would certainly be glad to give you an in-service on investigations, fact-finding, privacy laws, and when to release information and when not to release information. I really think that would be helpful for the administration. Also, I noticed at last, at the last meeting two weeks ago, you took a vote on changing the holiday on the school calendar, and you took that vote before there was any public comment. And what I would have to say about that. And what I would have to say about that holiday is, um, I really don't understand why you did that. Um, if you look at, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day, there are only twelve states in the country that celebrate that holiday. And Massachusetts is not one of those states. Mrs. Brandalini said that Newton was the only town that had it on their school calendar. So is that our goal to be like Newton? Um, she also said that it would just be on the calendar and that would be it. But I think that would be the backwards door of trying to teach that when children asked, what was it? And, but anyway, I looked at the rest of the school calendar and I noticed that Christmas, which is the biggest commercial holiday of the calendar year, and probably ninety-five percent of the people in Situate celebrate this holiday. And I was wondering, why was that not on the calendar? To me, that was discrimination, religious discrimination. I also looked at, um, a newsletter that.
Uh, Ms. Conley, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off because then, um, you know, I, I appreciate the points you've made and I, you know, we can definitely take them under advisement. I think your, your point about the pledge of allegiance, uh, definitely deserves some consideration and is a good idea. I didn't know whether towns were doing that, but, you know, we as a committee can definitely, uh, take a look at that. And while you were talking, Ms. Brandalini, that actually forwarded me the anti-racism resolution that we had and, um, yeah, I, I can see where that comes across and we might have to take a look at that as a school committee because the message is definitely isn't coming, or, yeah, the, the message definitely gets, uh, misconstrued with, with one of the sentences in there. So I'll, I'll take a look at that and start working with Superintendent Burkhead and, um, um, the school committee to make sure that, that the wording is clear. I think, I think that's a very good point. Um, and in terms of the school calendar, we have gone through, I know the superintendent showed with the school committee a new updated version of it. None of the, the dates or times or anything would change, but the overall look and feel would change. And we can definitely take the, the Christmas point under advisement. And seeing what kind of holidays should be reflected on the, um, calendar, not necessarily because it's a holiday that we take off, but because it's recognizing the, the different religious holidays that might impact the families and the students in our, um, in our school district.
Okay, thank you. I do think it would be helpful if we had the, um, Jewish holidays for the teachers. I know there are two, um, pretty important Jewish holidays in September, and that would be really helpful as far as not scheduling a test, et cetera. So.
Yes, no, I, I agree. That's actually part of the conversation we had and, and part of, uh, one of the things that we're looking at. So no, I, I agree with you there.
Okay, thank you. And one other thought, when we talk about diversity, I also hope that we are talking about diversity of thought.
Great. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, seeing no other hands raised, I just had one comment that I was gonna make at this time. So obviously, for the past year and a half, we've, I've been fortunate to have a large number of people attending our meetings because they've been done through Zoom and not as a public, uh, actual meeting in person. The governor's declaration does end on June fourteenth. So it looks like unless there's something changes in the state legislator, legislature, um, you know, it looks like the school committee meetings will probably have to start being in person again on June twenty-first. There's been a lot of great feedback in the town in terms of, you know, people, both staff, students and, uh, fam, uh, adults saying that they enjoy the meetings being either live on Facebook or through Zoom because they, they can attend and not necessarily have to sit in a, in a school building, um, for several hours on a Monday night. Um, so I just want to say that while we do, you know, while that declaration might end, we are looking at other ways to make sure that we do have that continued, um, public comment coming back as well as people being able to attend our meetings remotely. So there'll be, there'll be more to come on that in the future, but it is something that we are definitely considering, especially as that, um, as that declaration comes to a close. And there's no change of that in the, uh, the state legislature yet. Uh, so moving on, the next, um, item on our agenda is a acceptance of gift, um, with Dr. Bobert.
Hi, um, yes, um, just wanted to thank the, uh, Disabilities Commission for their generous gift. They've given us money that we purchased, um, books in the new media center at the high school as well as, um, money that we're in the process of purchasing supplies for our adaptive physical education classes for our students with disabilities. So, um, I hope that, um, we can, uh, you can accept that and, um, we're very grateful.
Great. Thank you for presenting that, Dr. Bobert. Uh, is there a, uh, vote or a motion from the committee? I'm sorry.
Um, I'll make the motion. Um, it is recommended that this, uh, I make a motion that the school committee accept with great appreciation, uh, the town of Situate Commission on Disabilities donation that helps support our students at the high school.
Second.
Yep.
Sorry, Mike.
No, sorry.
Uh, so I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, long yes, uh, Brandalini?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you to the, uh, Commission on Disabilities. Uh, next on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. So we have minutes in our backup for the May tenth and May twenty-fourth, uh, meetings of this year. So if there are no questions or comments on the minutes, I'll accept a motion, uh, on each one of those minutes separately.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Limblon?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Gates?
Right, yes.
Uh, Brandalini?
Yes.
And long yes. Uh, and then is there a motion for the May twenty-fourth minutes?
Um, I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Don't do that. I'm not.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gates. Uh, long yes, Gates?
Yes.
Limblon?
Yes.
Uh, Hayes?
Yes.
And Brandalini?
Yes.
Great. Uh, thank you. Uh, so next is a, uh, subcommittee report from Superintendent Burkhead on the South Shore Education Collaborative.
Thank you, Chairman Long. Uh, just a few items here. The budget, uh, the enrollment projections and budget projection for the fiscal year, uh, for the collaborative are in line with the projected budget. Also, the rental space at the Randolph High School will be renovated for the re, turn of the, uh, South Shore, um, collaborative programming for September twenty-one. And the board approved a one-year contract extension for union personnel calling for a step and two percent increase. Also, the board reviewed and updated the healthcare manual. And finally, the board approved their FY twenty-two chair and vice chair positions. That's the update.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Burkhead. Are there any questions from the committee? Seeing none? Yeah. Um, and so next on the agenda was any correspondence that the committee might have received? I've seen none from the committee. There's one actually that I received from an eighth grade student that I wanted to share and get feedback on the, from the committee from. I haven't responded back. I'm not using the person's name just in case. I don't want to be mentioned, but they're an eighth grader, eighth grade student at Gates, um, in their civics classes researching how the government takes action to address issues at the state and local level. And for the project he's working on, it, they're advocating for a switch from plastic to paper straws at Gates. Uh, based on the fact that paper straws are better for the environment and I use them instead of plastic straws to make Gates more environmentally friendly. So I did want to share that before I did respond to that student, just to, um, let the committee and the administration aware that that's something that, you know, student, or at least one student is talking about it at the Gates, uh, Middle School.
So do you want us to vote on paper straws?
I, I don't. I just wanted to let you know that it was out there because I heard from, from that student at the end of last week.
It's a great idea. Absolutely. Happy for that.
Except for COVID, I mean, paper, plastic straws are prohibited. No, I guess they left it just at the bags.
They left it at the bag. Yep. And you can still go to Shaz and buy, uh, plastic straws.
Okay.
Um, so next on the agenda is the warrants. Uh, Dr. Dutch, is there a warrant to read?
There is not a warrant this week.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other agenda or any other business, I'm sorry, that the school committee wanted to bring up? Seeing none. Uh, so there are a couple of future agenda items that were listed in our backup. So our next meeting in two weeks on the twenty-first, um, there'll be a retirement recognition for any of the, for all of the, um, staff that are retiring at the end of this year. And then they've all been invited to attend, uh, that night's meeting. And it's the last day of school and probably one of the last things they want to do, but they've all been invited to, to come to our meeting. As I mentioned, it could be an in-person meeting at that point. I know at least, we need at least a quorum and the chair to, um, be in person. Um, but I'll, you know, the superintendent, I'll be reaching out to the committee as that gets closer and we, we finalize some things there. Um, the secondary schools will do their improvement plan. We're gonna, uh, begin the discussion on the superintendent's self-evaluation. And then, uh, also have a discussion at that point on our role in, um, evaluating Superintendent Burkhead. Uh, there'll also be an update on, uh, an ESSR update, um, an update on SEF grants. And then, um, voting on the elementary school improvement plans that, that we discussed tonight. Um, other than that, are there any other agenda items that members of the school committee wanted to put on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Uh, so at this time, um, we do have an executive session scheduled for the end of this meeting. Uh, we will not be returning to executive session, uh, the public session after our executive session. Um, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to, um, ensure regular meeting and ensure executive session for the two, reasons that were given in the, uh, in the meeting agenda.
Move just stated in the agenda?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, take a roll call vote. Uh, long yes, Hayes?
Yes.
Limblon?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
And Brandalini?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you all for coming tonight. Enjoy the Bruins game. I hope they're winning.